Can't hear?
Yeah.
Oh wait, she's connecting.
There's a laptop in my office.
All right, we can, we can, I say we start the meeting and we'll move her, we'll move her up before when we start, yeah, if we can move her up before the citizens comments if she's here.
If she's here.
Yeah.
All right, everything's on.
Okay. All right, so the time is 6:01 and I call the August 11th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. We'll start with approval of minutes.
I read the minutes and I make a motion be accepted as written.
Seconded.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, Terry, none there approved. And I don't know if Pam's coming in or not.
He's gonna try a different computer, so why don't you start with yours?
Okay, so what we're gonna do is where if I could have a motion to move Pam up once she gets on, well, we'll start with the citizens comments and then when she comes on, we'll move her up so that she can leave after she gives her report. I just need a motion for that.
I make a motion that we move Pam up.
I'll second that.
All right, so a motion's been made and seconded that we move the board and committee report for election and absentee ballots up on the agenda so that she can give her report as soon as she gets connected. And she still can't hear us?
No.
So I will start with the next item on the agenda, which is citizens comments and Pam, if you get, okay. So we have a lot of citizens comments. What I'm gonna do is like any other, like if this was a regular meeting, we let the, we have citizens comments, which is the citizens can state what they want, but if there's questions or anything, we don't have to answer them during that time. What we're gonna do here is there are questions mixed in with these comments. Well, and the public comments are about several different things on the agenda. So what we'll do is I'm gonna read all the comments and when we get to the items on the agenda, we'll address, we'll address everything. So I'm gonna start in the order of most recent to the, the most recent received to the later. And in order to be qualified for public comments, they had to have been received by one hour before the meeting, which was five o'clock. So I have one from, I tried. There's multiple emails from the same person and they're all in different orders. I was trying to arrange them, but it just got a little too much. So I'll just start from the most recent to the latest. So the first one is, I'm gonna state the name and the address like would be done at a, at a, at a meeting. So I have Kenneth and Janet Weisman, 22 Lakeside Terrace, about the horsepower restrictions. If this should pass, what is the town going to do? Buy a big motor and trailer for 20 plus grand? Hire a qualified law enforcement person to patrol the lake? I do not believe that this has been thought through. The next one is from Kenneth and Janet Weisman, 22 Lakeside Terrace, horsepower restrictions. At last fall's drawdown meeting, it was brought up that the US Coast Guard ultimately over the lake, something the six fingered salary people in Hartford were not aware of. Local authorities can't do their job and bring in the coast guard.
Tracy, you keep moving away from your mic. You keep fading in and out.
Sorry. I might have covered it up.
Oh, with the stacks of email?
Yeah, with my stacks of email. The next one is also about the horsepower limit and it's from Kenneth and Janet Weisman, 22 Lakeside Terrace. Putting a horsepower limit on boats operate on the lake only limits the homeowners who pay exorbitant taxes to enjoy the lake. Laws and regulations already exist that would solve our problems and the powers to be would see that they are enforced. If Summers and Hanson's can't do their jobs, then I suggest they resign. Another thought for the lake property owners, band together, hire an attorney and deposit our property tax money in an escrow account until the state and local leaders correct the problem using existing laws and regulations. Money talks. Horsepower ordinance from Sue Bennett, 146 North Shore Road, who are Voluntown public officials. I am formally stating that, that I am against a horsepower ordinance for Beach Pond. I have been a homeowner on the lake since 2007 and have summered at the lake on my grandparents' property built in 1928 my entire life. This lake has been a clean, quiet, calm, and enjoyable lake up until the Rhode Island boat launch was constructed. We have never in 50-plus years experienced the issues that are happening now. First of all, the lake is not large enough to support two boat launches. The Rhode Island boat launch should never have been allowed to be built. This obviously created double the amount of parking and boating traffic on an already busy lake. Second, it is unfortunate that many boater are not adhering to boating rules, never mind common sense. It has been on our observation for the past three years that most of the issues are stemming from jet skiers launching from the Rhode Island side. With all this said, I am still against the horsepower ordinance. My family enjoys boating and jet skiing as well. It is part of the charm and fun involved in owning a lake house. We are all licensed drivers who follow the rules, respect our neighbors, and use common sense. We have not needed a horsepower ordinance on this lake for the past 50-plus years, nor do we now. What we do need is more policing at the launches to ensure everyone is licensed and registered and that there is no loitering at the launches, especially Rhode Island. A horsepower ordinance is not the right solution to the problem on Beach Pond. Thank you respectfully. The next is from Chris Bennett, 146 North Shore Road. Good evening. I'm writing to you to clearly express that I am not in favor of a horsepower limit on Beach Pond. As a waterfront property owner with family that have been on the lake since 1928, I am asking for more enforcement of the laws and regulations that are already in place. I am asking that you work or demand with Rhode Island officials to control the problematic boat launch that was recently installed on the Rhode Island side of the lake. The problem on the lake does not stem from the people who live on the lake. The problem comes from out-of-control jet skiers and boaters that come from the Rhode Island launch. I repeatedly picked up trash both at the RI boat launch and along the shoreline to prevent this beautiful lake from being polluted. My wife and daughter have been repeatedly harassed as they paddleboard by jet skiers coming drive from the Rhode Island launch. And yes, I have repeatedly called and emailed the Rhode Island authorities. I have witnessed firsthand as drivers with Rhode Island plates have come to the Connecticut boat launch and blatantly disregarded the directions of the workers who are there to enforce the rules. I have seen parties and fires out on the point, private property, where there are over 75 people present. I have had jet skiers ride by only feet from our docks, oblivious to the children swimming there. Please do something about this. Please get Rhode Island involved, but please don't think the problem has anything to do with the size of the motors being used. Please don't take my comments the wrong way. I have absolutely no problem sharing the lake with everyone who is willing to be respectful and responsible. The next one is from Brian Tegtumire from 146 North Shore Road. My family has owned the property at 146 North Shore Road since 1957. It's not the horsepower causing the problem. We have never had problems until recently. When Rhode Island closed their family swimming beach and installed a boat launch, that's bringing in outsiders that don't respect Beach Lake, Beach Pond Lake. All the time, having the summertime cottage, our family has enjoyed the lake along with water skiing and now teaching our grandchildren to water ski. It's not right to penalize all the lake landowners that pay higher taxes and love, enjoy, and respect the lake and our lake owners. These outsiders coming in on the boat launches, not obeying boating and personal watercraft laws are the problem. Limit the number of outside non-taxpayers and patrol the lawbreakers because without patrolling them, they'll just ignore the limits and it will just punish the taxpayers. Rhode Island boat launch with its large parking is the problem, not horsepower. The next one. Jet skis, not PVC. The horsepower ordinance will only hurt the homeowners who enjoy and respect this beautiful lake. We are a boating family and a water ski and lake board, but with the crazy jet skis, it is very dangerous on the lake. A person with an app on their phone clocked them going 76 miles per hour, racing each other, and the DEP and DEM look the other way and pass the buck. That's Kip Vella Vance, 10 Beachview Road. This is Susan Hebert, 146 North Shore Road. The meeting scheduled that will discuss limiting the horsepower for boats on Beach Pond. No, the lawbreakers that have been infesting the pond do not respect laws, new or existing. This is an effort to punish the law-abiding homeowners because of the state's failure to protect them from outside motorists. The homeowners are not creating havoc. It is public access that is not limited to boating. Restrict access not the taxpayers who respect the pond and conduct responsible boating and jet ski operation. We own a jet ski and a pontoon boat and our family has been terrorized by these public non-owner jet skis and boats coming too close to the shore with reckless disregard for the children, not to mention the garbage they leave in their wake. Do not punish us. Control them. I don't see a name or an address on this one. I have lived on Beach Pond over 60 years and have never experienced anything like the problem we have with the reckless and very dangerous PVC. This one's from Todd Lambert. The subject of a horsepower ordinance is a definite no for me. The problem is not the residents with their boats or jet skis and various watercraft. The problem is with the lack of control with the boat launches and parking areas. The drawdown should be done every few years for me and it's a properties and it should be somewhere between seven and 10 foot. This one's Tammy Dagno, 189 Bennett Road. It just says, please add my email address to CC list regarding Beach Pond. Also typo in my public comment. I would be in favor of banning jet skis from being launched from both boat launches or at least a time restriction on when they can be out on the lake. This one is from Steve Diaz. Voluntown and state officials, you are all very much aware of the beginning stages of the invasive weed problem. We have all noticed over the years. In my four years here, I can see a significant difference right in front of my home. Other importance for this deep drawdown is to allow the cleanup and freeze of these invasive weed species as well. Right now, this can be managed by the homeowners here through the fall and winter seasons. The further you delay these drawdowns, the greater impact this, the home greatest impact this will have on the lower water levels surrounding homes and the dam section of the pond. Patch of pond residents have personally stated that their weed issues in the past have prevented their boats from being used during much of the summer months. We don't want these issues here as well as appreciate the ability to leave our docks to enjoy the pond. If you continue to delay cleanup and this becomes problematic for us and further complicates our boating access, then the state of Connecticut will have to step in and provide state funds, state employees, state equipment, et cetera, to rectify the situation, which will add up to a substantial cost. Let us take care of it now while it's still relatively free to the state. Please consider our request for the benefit of all homeowners. This was in reply to another, someone else's email that will be read later. Should've split these all up, passed them out to you guys.
So next time.
This one is from Tammy Dagno, 189 Bennett Road. I am a homeowner on Beach Pond with complaints and suggestions for the issues being experienced concerning uses on the lake. We are experiencing a tremendous amount of noise mainly from jet drivers visiting the lake. There have also been dangerous and reckless driving of PWC on a regular basis. Most weekdays that occurs from 2:00 PM to well after sunset and on weekends it occurs from sunrise to sunset and sometimes beyond. It's ridiculous. There has been a decline in water bird sightings. Kingfishers, heron, osprey, bald eagle, geese, ducks, et cetera, are nowhere to be found whereas they could be seen regularly in seasons past. Passive boating such as canoeing, kayaking, paddleboarding, and sailing are becoming dangerous as PWC drivers are not obeying boating rules. And many people have encountered close calls, choppy waters, and no room to enjoy the lake. Because of the dominant presence of PWC, fishing and swimming are also being affected. It's getting to the point where as wildlife, homeowners and renters can only enjoy use of the lake and its beauty early in the morning or after dark. The noise from the PWC is like a chainsaw running for six hours continuously, day after day. Or maybe you can imagine a dirt bike revving by your house back and forth for six hours a day, every day. That's what it's like. Ridiculous is a kind word to describe it. I own PWC and don't use them that often or even for any length of time. I would be in favor of banning just jet skis from being launched from both boat launches. Right at least launches, right at least a time restriction on when they can be on the lake. The state boat launches, particularly the Rhode Island launch, have contributed to the decline of enjoyment to this important and valuable resource for the town of Voluntown and state of Connecticut. This was an occasional occurrence prior to Rhode Island putting in their no rules boat launch. They labeled us a nuisance community. Really, they promised rules and enforcement back in 2016 when they were still finishing construction. They need to be held accountable. Lock all gates unless the launches can be manned by respective state employees. Thanks for the opportunity. All right, this one's from the Trask family on 8 Lakeside Terrace. To whom it may concern, first horsepower has never been the issue on Beach Pond. Volume of traffic has been the clear issue. Volume has been doubled, maybe quadrupled, noting jet skis come in pairs after the, they install of the Rhode Island launch. Beach Pond has been our home for more than 45 years. We have had power boats successfully in use for those years, operating under the guidance of safe boating laws. There are many fine families with good intent that have safely boated on Beach Pond with mutual respect to the residents and visitors. We have seen HP come and go as an issue based on speed over the years, not capacity. The prime problem on Beach Pond is specific to traffic and enforcement. We did not have this epic problem with a single Connecticut launch. With only one Connecticut launch, the limited parking in the launch naturally limited oncoming traffic. With the lack of authority shown at the Rhode Island state launch, though their intent may have been great, their ability to enforce has been a disaster. The unfortunate fact is the lake does not have the volume to handle as many boats as the two launches can launch. We have recently seen Connecticut enforcement, Connecticut State Police, DEP, the other enforcement, et cetera. This has slowed the illegal operations, actions, and traffic. A HP restriction could be a concern with respect to incoming non-residence boats that do not reside on the lake. Size may also be a consideration due to the Rhode Island launch being a drop zone for some saltwater flushing noted in the beginning of the year. The lack of a flush station for both launches, Connecticut and Rhode Island should be an immediate concern to the health of our lake with the influx of traffic. A simple solution, an income stream to each state to finance better enforcement could be the following. Require a permit, simple permit online, noting operators, boat registration, licenses, and a dollar charge for the day. This could all be purchased per boat online. The online system would naturally limit volume to the Connecticut and Rhode Island launch, capacity parking. Follow up with enforcement. No permit, no go. A flush station is critical to lake health. Other states and lakes have permits and flush stations. These solutions will add to health and safety of our lake, which again, we have navigated safely without HP restriction for over 45 years as taxpaying resident. Second, lowering the 10 feet would be fine with our family, noting all upgrades should be environment restrictions and be permitted. Our family would like to know the advantages and disadvantages of lowering 10 feet. Thank you, the Trask family. I liked that. The next is from James and Terry Williams, 34 Beachview Road. Beachview Road extension. Hello Tracy, as far as the Beach Pond drawdown goes, we would prefer it to happen each year. Whether it is approved for each year or every three years of two-foot drawdown is just too little. For those of us who live off the main shoreline, a six-foot drawdown would be of satisfactory help. The trouble is with only two to three-foot drawdown occurs, it is only those whose properties are on the shallow shoreline get the benefit. Ours being on the main drag does not allow for us to do necessary shore work to our retaining walls. Much of the cement wears away, leaving a very rough wall or rough landing. Our grandkids as well as we adults find it quite harmful. We need to repair our walls, but we need an ample drawdown. Those reps who do not live on the pond, including our town officials, could care less, we know. If the town wants us to continue to pay these higher taxes, you officials need to work with us, not against us. Take a strong stand for a change. Be our representatives. You wanted us to vote for you. Well, now the shoe is on the other foot. We need your vote, voice for us. Make a decent drawdown happen for all of us. P.S. By the way, we are so tired of hearing the excuses about the four fishermen who come each April to catch their fish. Do they pay our taxes? No, so stop catering to the fishermen. Cater to the Beach Pond homeowners who do pay the taxes. All right, the next is from Dawn Rich, 31 Beachview Road Extension, 35 Beachview Road Extension. I am requesting a 10-foot drawdown to work on my waterfront wall in the fall of 2020 on my property on 31 and 35 Beachview Road. Next we have Bob and Miki Layton, 871 Beach Pond Road. Good afternoon, town of Voluntown officials. For the invitation for a public comment concerning the proposed drawdown of Beach Pond, I submit the following consideration at the meeting scheduled for 8/11/20. I am opposed to any two-foot drawdown of the lake during any year as it serves no purpose whatsoever and the money expended for such a minimal drawdown should be invested elsewhere. I am in favor of a deeper drawdown, which would allow homeowners to plan and expedite long overdue repairs to their waterfront. We have experienced we have experienced two major drawdowns in the past 40-plus years. The first was in 1984 when the dam was repaired. This was like a 10-foot or greater drawdown. The other that was, we recollect, was in 2004, which was likely a six-foot drawdown. There have been no substantial drawdowns that we recall since 2004. As others have stated, Beach Pond is relatively deep in comparison to other local lakes. A deep drawdown should have minimal impact on habitat or fish or other aquatic plants or animals. I respectfully request that the town officials import the 10-foot drawdown of the lake in the fall of 2020. Please find attached photos of the 18, 1984 drawdown. So there's also pictures included of the drawdown that you're not probably gonna be able to see here, but it's really well. They'll be on file for you to see.
Is there, Tracy, real quick there, I know we said we weren't gonna answer individual stuff here, but is there any, does the state have records going back to 84, do you know?
Um, they should.
That's when they, that's when they fixed the dam. It was right around there and they dropped the lake real low so they could work on a dam. It wasn't an intentional drawdown as we thick call them now. And the one in 2004 was done and the road foreman at that time had to go out. The state agreed because the road foreman had to go out and make sure that nobody was fringing on state land. Their biggest fight for big drawdowns were years ago when they had them, people would take and move their retaining walls out onto state property and would keep reclaiming some of the land from the state. And how, how else could it have been done where somebody's got a six or eight-foot drop right off the edge of their property? That is the biggest thing that we've got over the years for them not wanting to draw down five, six, eight feet is that they were afraid that people were gonna keep moving their walls out further. And we fought with them and it didn't do any good whatsoever. That's why they stick to the two or three feet. I know it's mostly useless, but it's the state of Connecticut that makes the rules. They own the property, like Tracy said, if you own the dam, you have control of the water and they have control of the water and they're the ones that have to give to us because we've asked for a lot more, a lot deeper drawdowns for a lot of years.
Okay. So the next is Jackie Dietrich. I think she gave an address before, 63 Bennett Circle. Hi Tracy and Craig, why is the state DEP sending workers to the lake who have no authority to give tickets? This was the case on 8/9/20. We need the current laws upheld and enforcement on Beach Pond. We need this after the Rhode Island ramp parking monitors depart after 4:00 PM, weekends and weekdays, especially Monday evenings. We need state employees to work with their eyes open, not on their phones, collecting time and a half or a couple useless hours. We need them placed at the border, not up at Finn Beach or to the west of the Connecticut boat ramp, talking to fishermen about a six mile per hour speed limit that doesn't exceed, doesn't exist of the Trask's Mueller's property. This is David Dietrich, 63 Bennett Circle. Lower my questions for the meeting scheduled for 8/12/2020. What is the horsepower limit rating being discussed for Beach Pond? I would like to know where I can find the information on the restrictions. Currently there, the no swimming laws that aren't being enforced as well as the speed limit on the west side of the pond. Often the enforcement on the pond cannot ticket in Rhode Island or ticket at all from Connecticut as recent as 8/9/2020. Request a 10-foot drawdown to correct repair retaining walls as the last couple drawdowns are useless for 75% of waterfront property owner. Bennett Road and Bennett Circle roads continue to deteriorate. Did the board apply for the grant due by August 14? And if not, did the board apply for a different grant other than the Beach Pond area roads? And if not, did the board apply for a different grant other than the Beach Pond area roads? Community well, if a community well is to be put in place for Beach Pond, it should not allow non-conforming lots to now be conforming. I recommend that the town ensure that the septics are in good working order for all of the homes on or near the waterfront. There are several homes on the water that need new repaired septic, and that would fix a row of the problems with water as well. It would not cost the city any tax dollars. This continues to be a problem, and it's mostly because homeowners don't want to repair their own septic system. I would recommend an inspection of all homes on the water. This is from Denise Olson, twenty-five Beachview Road Extension. We are requesting a drop in water level of ten feet in order to do some repairs to the front of our property at water level. The previous two-foot drop, as well as length of time, did not lend itself for to get much of that. There's two, two emails in a row. They just have a residence name and address. They don't have any comments. There, it's Kevin, Kevin Mule and thirty-one Beachview Road Extension. So if you're listening, your email just had your name and address and no comments. Ron Olson, twenty-five Beachview Road Extension. I would like to ask for a ten-foot drawdown for the pond this fall and winter to allow for work to be done on our walls. The usual smaller drawdown allows for those on the shallow area to get their work done. However, for many of us, this is not sufficient and will not even kill the weed growth in the shallow areas. We need a longer drawdown period along with a ten-foot drawdown to complete any job. Thanks for listening. This is S. Diaz, eight-thirty-one Beach Pond Road. Please propose a minimum drawdown of at least ten feet this fall twenty-twenty to allow all homeowners to complete required maintenance repairs to existing retaining walls and to better manage the weed control plaguing the shallow waters of the cove and the inlet area toward the dam. We are trying to manage the situation ourselves while we still can. Otherwise, state funds and services will be required to correct the issue if our requests are not fulfilled. This is from Terry Williams. Resending my email of seven-twenty-seven-twenty below for the meeting tonight. Good morning, Senator Summers. My name is Terry Williams, and my husband and I are homeowners on Beach Pond. I read your lengthy response below. I thank you for what you are doing. One main paragraph of what you wrote gravely concerns me. See below. One thing that can be done is a horsepower ordinance in the town, which would restrict horsepower allowed on the pond. This would essentially make it illegal to jet ski on the pond, but would apply to all on the pond. The DEP will not consider closing the pond at this time, as has been suggested, or the boat launch, which is federally funded. I'm not in favor of this horsepower ordinance at all and never will be because of the out-of-towners is primarily why there is such an uproar over the use of jet skiers on Beach Pond. They are the reckless ones. We who live on this lake have jet skis and abide by the DEP regulations and rules. In effect, this horsepower ordinance would include us and punish us due to the recklessness of the others. We've lived here on Beach Pond for over forty-eight years, and along with others living here, do not want our rights restricted by even the possibility of a thought of a horsepower ordinance. It is completely off the table. I thoroughly enjoy cruising around the lake in my own pace. I enjoy the time alone. The, I enjoy the alone time and viewing God's creations along the shores. No, a horsepower ordinance will never be in the cards. Am I still there?
Yes, we can still hear you.
Can you see me?
Yes.
I touched something on my screen.
You may have just swapped for away from Zoom, but we can still see and hear you.
Okay. So if you need my attention, you have to yell at me because I can't see anything. I hit something. Where was I? Our officials cannot react to the emotions of others, which are riding high right now. Decisions need to be made to ticket or disbar those who are defiant to the regulations of the DEP and DEM on Beach Pond. Mine, others' joy is just as important as it is to charge those who are defiant and drive their jet skis recklessly. All right. The next is from George Lucas, six-fifty-six North Shore Road. Dear Volantown officials, I am adding my name to the growing petition to draw down Beach Pond by ten feet this fall. All residents on the pond are asking for this to maintain walls, docks, and weed control. Thank you for your attention. Dave Rich, thirty-one Beachview Road Extension. I hereby petition a minimum drawdown of at least ten feet this fall twenty-twenty to allow for all homeowners to complete necessary and required maintenance repairs to existing walls. Excuse me. Ward and Margaret Thomas for Beachview Road. As waterfront property owners on Beach Pond, we own three watercraft vessels, all of which are registered, insured, and operated responsibly. Feel the proposed horsepower ordinance would be punitive to us and other property owners. Additionally, we request that other measures be taken to address the current problem impacting our use of Beach Pond. And this is the same email I just read from Terry Williams about with Senator Summers' letter. I got it twice. This is Angela and Chris Shabbat, one-sixty-eight North Shore Road. My family have been homeowners on Beach Pond since nineteen sixty-one. We do not support the horsepower ordinance. We enjoy water skiing and tubing with our children, and that is the main reason we chose to live on the lake. Please do not punish residents who follow the laws because there are no resources for enforcement. We pay high taxes in order to live here and should not be banned from our family activities on the pond. We do support a lake drawdown of at least four to six feet. My husband and I have done, have been doing the water sampling on the pond a good part of every year, every weekend for more than a decade. This is done to collect data to support drawdowns. There is no reason not to allow a drawdown every year to repair crumbling walls. We need this to maintain our property. The next is Ward and Margaret Thomas for Beachview Road. Please be advised, this is a formal request for a ten-foot water drawdown on Beach Pond for the purpose of making repairs to the wall of our property located at four Beachview Road. We are aware of the two-foot drawdown, which took place during the winter of twenty-nineteen twenty-twenty, which was insufficient and untimely due to insufficient notification and late action in beginning the drawdown. This is from Judy DeFolos, sixty-nine Bennett Circle. This is a formal request for a ten-foot drawdown to occur this fall so that work may be done on property. Thank you. Mullins on thirty-one Beachview Road Extension. Town of Volantown, I hereby petition a minimum drawdown of at least ten feet this fall twenty-twenty to allow for all homeowners to complete necessary and required maintenance repairs to existing retaining walls. David and Jackie Dietrich, sixty-three Bennett Circle and sixty-one Bennett Circle. We are requesting a ten-foot drawdown to work on our cracked waterfront wall. The two-foot drawdown in the middle of winter was unsatisfactory for two reasons. One, it did not provide the ability to reach the cracks at the base of our wall, and two, by the time it went down, then up again, and then down again last year, it was cold and too short a window to be able to work. Elizabeth Ostrowski, eighty-two Beachview Road Extension. I am requesting a minimum ten-feet drawdown of the lake to do necessary repairs on retaining walls, stairs, and properties. Jerry Stefanic, one-twelve Bennett Road. Tracy Hanson, first off, I want to thank you for all of your efforts regarding our issues at Beach Pond. The drawdown last winter did what the experts said it wouldn't do, and that was relieve our lake weed issue. It has been almost nonexistent this year. Also, with the presence of the DEP and the state police boats the last couple of weeks, the lake has been once again a pleasure to boat on. We have enjoyed our morning skiing and afternoon tubing alongside of the other boats and jet skis on the lake. Also, many thanks to the efforts regarding the trespassing issue on the Briggs Estate. I've seen much less garbage on my morning hikes on the Blue Trail. I used to come back with a bag full of garbage just from the first part of the trail, and the other day I picked up only three items. Amazing. Thanks to you and to you and all the enforcement officers helping out on this effort. I see on the Beach Pond homeowner site that there are two items on the agenda for tonight regarding Beach Pond. First, the request for another drawdown. I am not objectional to another drawdown, but I would ask if ten feet proposed is a bit excessive. I do understand that we need enough for folks to work on their walls, and we are in the same situation at the Trask property where I keep my skiing boat on their waterfront. I am not aware of anyone needing more than three or four feet to be able to access their walls. If someone actually needs a little more than fine, but ten feet. Then there is the horsepower issue. I can't believe that someone would be that insensitive to the other boat owners on the lake to even ask for a horsepower limit. This lake has been a water sports lake for as long as it has been here. I cannot even imagine the decline in the property values if a horsepower to something like six or ten horsepower was placed on Beach Pond. I have to say that my reasoning for moving to Volantown and Bennett Road was to be able to water ski. I would strongly oppose placing those kind of limits on the lake. The problem has been the jet skis coming in from Rhode Island and their reckless operation that we have already seen a decline in. With proper patrolling of the waters, I'm sure word would get out, and they would stop coming if it continues to cause some fines for reckless operation of their watercraft. The Rhode Island beach issue, or RI boat launch issue, to be more accurate, is the problem of RI not enforcing their own rules. The launch area is clearly marked with signs stating no swimming, but yet the officers manning the gate will not enforce the no swimming. That issue is the only problem we still have, in my opinion. If people want a quiet waterfront property with no motor noise, no sound of laughter, no music sounds drifting across the water, then I would have to say that they bought property at the wrong lake. This has never been that place. Even one of the folks who seemed to complain the most had a band playing music for hours. It's only when it's so loud that we can hear it in our houses with the windows closed that it is a problem, and that could be to be handled by the police, not trying to get boats off the water. This one's from Beth Ostrowski, thirty-two Beachview Road Extension. As an addendum to my reply in opposition to the horsepower ordinance, I would appreciate it if the following inquiries were on the public record and answered. Has the Town of Volantown been in communication with the Office of the Connecticut Attorney General regarding the many concerns on this body of water, including safety, state, and town liability, and enforcement? As the Town Attorney for Volantown determined whether any filings can be made with a court to provide the residents with relief such as an injunction. Are there any federal agencies that have resources available, such as the Coast Guard to safeguard the waters, any federal agency to clean up the unsanitary conditions on the shores of the pond? This one is from Edward Ostrowski, thirty-two Beachview Road. I, Edward Ostrowski of thirty-two Beachview Road Extension, object to the horsepower ordinance. A horsepower restriction will not correct the, the current or any problem. This will only affect the homeowners from enjoying the lake we paid for. The problem is the Rhode Island launch. There is absolutely no management, no enforcement of laws at all. A limit to horsepower will only be ignored by the Rhode Island offenders. RI needs to step up and correctly manage the launch or close it. This is the only corrective action. RE, the lake drawdown. It's my opinion the lake needs to be drawn down at least bi- annually. This would allow for needed wall and lake floor maintenance, as well as prevent damage from windows. This is from William Cunningham, forty-five Bennett Circle. I own property on forty-five Bennett Circle directly on Beach Pond. I would be very much in favor of a drawdown of the lake to the maximum reason. All right, this one is a really long chain of emails. I will read the one address to the Volantown officials, and the rest will be on public record if anyone wants to read it. Good afternoon, Town of Volantown officials. I am resending an email that was directly addressed to Senator Summers on July twenty-seventh twenty-twenty regarding the substantial ongoing issues at Beach Pond. Unfortunately, my questions to Senator Summers requesting clarity for her statements about the federal funding of Beach Pond remain unanswered, as I have received zero response to my query from the Office of Senator Summers. I ask that this email and my email communication of July twenty-seventh twenty-twenty be added to the public record from the Board of Selectmen meeting slated for eight-eleven-twenty via Zoom. In addition, I request copies of prior meeting minutes or any written communication that may exist regarding the establishment of a horsepower ordinance at Beach Pond and legal enforcement issues by state officials. If a proposed horsepower ordinance has been drafted, I request a copy in advance for any action concerning such by public officials. I'll restate that I am adamantly opposed to a horsepower ordinance that is under consideration by the Town of Volantown officials for Beach Pond. The issues at Beach Pond are specifically related to lack of enforcement of current laws and regulations. The suggestion that additional ordinances, which likely would not be enforced, in my personal opinion, demonstrates a complete disregard for the real issues that have been burdened Beach Pond homeowners since the construction of additional boat launch on the lake by the state of Rhode Island and their complete lack of enforcement of prohibited prohibitions at such launch, i.e. swimming, parking, loitering, littering, et cetera. In addition to the issues mentioned in my communication below, due to unsanitary conditions that have been allowed to exist at both state-controlled boat launches and the illegal trespassing on privately owned land that has been allowed to persist, we now have another invasive species on the pond. This would be the invasion of rats for the first time in our forty-year history with a home on Beach Pond. I implore public officials in Connecticut and Rhode Island to see that the current laws and regulations are enforced. We are counting on town officials to represent our best interests. We are counting on you to exercise good stewardship of this beautiful lake. Confirm that my wife, Michelle Lee, and myself are residents of Beach Pond residing at eight-seventy-one Beach Pond Road. Volantown, I regularly boat on Beach Pond, and yesterday counted not less than sixteen jet skis at one time within my field of view. Our waterfront home is directly across from Rhode Island Boat Launch. Yesterday, late afternoon, when asked by my six-year-old grandson, if I could take him tubing, I had to respond, no, it's not safe right now. Later in the evening, we viewed a large campfire on the beach where no swimming is allowed for the state of Rhode Island because the Beach Pond beach is closed. Unfortunately, the lack of adequate enforcement by public officials at Beach Pond is completely incomprehensive. Again, the issue is not the need for a new ordinance or new regulations. It is an issue of lack of enforcement of current rules, regulations, and laws. I kindly request acknowledgement of this message and my email of July twenty-seventh twenty-two. And then there's, like I said, a chain of emails. They're on, they'll be in public record for people to read. The next, I printed out twice. That's from Bob and Diane Sansone. Sansone, yeah. Tracy, thank you for your efforts. I will send a copy of my email below to the Volantown website, as you suggested. Is the head of Connecticut DEP, Katie Scharf Dykes, also involved and informed as what has been transpiring? My wife and I have experienced similar unsafe actions as described by many others caused by these out-of-control crazies, while we are kayaking on the pond. As you can see, this remains an issue that threatens the safety and lives of those on the pond. This is my opinion unequivocally a problem of lack of sustained and continual law enforcement by both state entities. As I have written before, if they can't effectively monitor, manage those resources, and provide sufficient enforcement, they need to shut them down. Those of us that abide by the rules, follow safe boating practices, and exercise common courtesy are never the problem, no matter what horsepower our vessels have. 99% of the problem are being caused by the 1% crazy, oblivious, or criminal element. The reality is a horsepower restriction will be ignored by the same crazies and ignore safe boating rules or ignore the law to have a registered vessel. These are the lawless people creating these unsafe issues that need to have the weight of the law descend upon them. Fines, arrests, impound, non-registered vehicles, etc. Besides a horsepower restriction required sustained and continual presence monitoring of someone that has the authority to deny entry to any vessel exceeding the limit at the boat launch. And as we've seen, the states have already demonstrated their failure and ability to provide that level of management and enforcement. Even if the Rhode Island launch and beachfront is truly closed down, the problems of illegal camping, drinking, and trespassers emanating from the Connecticut Boat Launch remains a problem. And oh, by the way, to think that the Rhode Island jet ski crazies or those that ignore the closed Rhode Island shore will not simply revert to using the Connecticut Boat Launch as a staging area to continue their behavior is a triumph of hope over reason. Bottom line, it is only a matter of time before a physical altercation, serious injury, or even death occurs. Given the incidents that have been reported, the state of Connecticut and Rhode Island need to enforce the law at both the launches and patrol the pond on a sustained and continual basis, or acceptance of this and shut the launches down. And then there's a, this is also in response to the same chain of emails that's also off the whole thing will be on public record. Are you guys still there? Because I can't see you.
Yes, we're still here.
Like, am I just talking to myself?
No, no. Here, and we have 23 people on the YouTube stream, so.
Okay, we're getting to the end. Um, this is from Steve Diaz also. This is, this is addressed to fellow homeowner, so I think this is a chain of another, I think they responded to the email. I can read it. It's a response to another email that's coming up. Fellow homeowners, please monitor the activity at the Rhode Island launch, especially those on Beachview Road Extension with a clear view to the area. I just drove by the lot and will do so periodically throughout the day. If the activities intensify, I can already hear and see a loud couple of jet skis zipping by from my home office. Today is a holiday. I don't know what it is, August 10th. Today is a holiday for the state of Rhode Island, so there is a very good chance we will see more weekend-type loitering today. If anyone notices groups of 15 or more in the parking lot and the water, etc., please call the Rhode Island Governor COVID hotline to report any gatherings. This is a state of Rhode Island regulation set forth by Governor Ramondo. The Rhode Island state officials need to promptly respond to any potential complaints and issues, fines for all potential violations incurred. Please be aware of both parking areas in Rhode Island across the road from the, they're both filling up. This is from Craig Pernardo, 831 Beach Pond Road. I fully support implementing a horsepower ordinance on Beach Pond to reduce the chaos we are all enduring. Jeff Dunphy, 299 North Shore Road. Good morning. RE, the Beach Pond horsepower ordinance, this is not the solution to the current problem at Beach Pond. The problem is coming from the area not being patrolled. And during the rare times they are, laws not being enforced. This is a voting scenario. I vote no to a horsepower ordinance on Beach Pond. RE, the Beach Pond drawdown, can we please get a clear understanding as to why the lake cannot be drawn down to a workable level on a yearly or biannual basis? I think understanding the reasoning behind the lack of a drawdown would be extremely helpful. If the reason is financial, can the cost please be explained? New business, RE, the North Shore Boat Launch. On numerous occasions this summer, I stopped by the boat launch on my way into camp. There were two kids, teenagers, sitting in chairs with bright yellow shirts on. I went over to ask them what they were doing. Their response was something like, we are making sure people don't park here unless they are launching a boat. I asked them what their process was, if they saw something going, someone going hiking or taking a cooler in the woods. They responded, we let them know they shouldn't be doing it. And me, if they continue, pass, or ignore you, them, nothing. We are not here to enforce the rules, only to let people know. Me, do you call anyone to get them removed? Them, no. Minutes later, a vehicle with Rhode Island plates pulls in and walks into the woods, five people with a cooler. They didn't even budge from their seats. By 1:00 PM, these workers were gone. This is absurd to put kids here where there is a known problem. Tickets need to be issued for both trespassers and vehicles. One police officer said there were too many people to ticket. Huh? How does this make any sense? Ticket vehicles, one police officer. Oh, ticket, the cars before you walk in. Take it a few. If others run, guess what? They will not return if others got tickets. We have done our part on the property with signage, which gets ripped down often. Now it is time for the law to work. As always, thank you for your help with these issues. That's on my stuff. Edward, this is from Edward and Elizabeth Ostrowski, 32 Beachview Road. We are not positioned to the proposed horsepower ordinance. We own three watercraft vessels, all of which are registered and insured. We are responsible operators. This proposed ordinance would punish us and cause us great harm. We purchased this property so that we could enjoy the lake. Perhaps our local leaders should reach out to the Office of Connecticut Attorney General for assistance in solving this jurisdiction and enforcement issue. All right. This is from Robert Lamberton. It's also a response to a chain. Tim, your summary is spot on. I totally agree with you that the worst problems stem from the Rhode Island Boat Launch. I also agree that those of us that are here and Connecticut residents will have zero impact on Rhode Island officials, law enforcement. This is where we will need help, as you rightly point out, from our Rhode Island neighbors on the lake. We also need to continue support our elected Connecticut officials. And then I did print this one out twice as well. This one is SDS 831 Beach Pond Road. Town of Volantown, I hereby petition a minimum drawdown of at least 10 feet this fall to allow for all homeowners to complete necessary and required maintenance repairs to existing retaining laws. David Lamont, 198 Wiley School Road. For the selectmen, looking for an update on when the paving will be done. It is curious that the equipment to grind the road was moved into place only to be hauled away a day or two later after Campbell Mill was finished. One of the drainage repairs that was done has not been repaved for some reason, and the area left a mess. In my memory, if my memory serves, this project was supposed to be done with pound aid for roads for money this year, not the leaning to, not the leaning to do it in the spring, as the first selectman told me in an email. Could someone get in touch with me? Uh, let's see. This is Tim Hollister. The first selectman Hanson and the Board of Selectmen. This is Tim Hollister, 100 North Shore Road. I am at the west end of Beach Pond and have been, excuse me, on the lake for 60 of my 63 years. I've been monitoring the emails from my neighbors for the past few months. I totally sympathized with their complaints and frustration and would like to make the following comments. The current situation with the jet skis and large gatherings is a serious public health and safety problem. At our end of the lake, if we try to swim across the lake on a weekend, something we have done for decades until last year, we take our life in our hands. At the start of this summer, I tried to politely signal a few jet skiers to slow down and observe the six mile per hour sign at the last quarter mile of the lake from our home to Finn Beach. Several jet skiers stopped, gunned the engine, and came up to our shoreline and told me to F off. One jet skier came inside our raft, which 25 feet from shore at about 30 miles per hour, oblivious to what he was doing. Two, the DEP, the Rhode Island officials and the town officials need to stop thinking that the current conditions are someone else's problem. Particularly incredible was the statement of Rhode Island officials that the Rhode Island Boat Launch was built with federal funds, so there is nothing anyone can do to enforce safety. Absurd and incorrect. My understanding is that Volantown imposes a special tax rate on Beach Pond homes. It seems to me that if corrective action is not taken by Volantown against the Rhode Island Public Recreation officials and police, the homeowners could now hire a appraiser and collectively seek a large percentage reduction in our home values with resulting loss of tax revenue to the town. This has occurred on other recreational lakes throughout the nation. Four, most homeowners are not in favor of a horsepower ordinance, which seems to be imposing a penalty on us, to deal with irresponsible behavior in visitors and the lack of enforcement by public officials. Five, let us realize that problem here is centered on the Rhode Island beach and boat launch. The problem is a Rhode Island intrusion into Connecticut. Everything in Connecticut needs to work on the Rhode Island people to stop both the boating safety violations and the large gathering trash and sanitation issues at the east end of the lake. To be constructive here, number six, to be constructive, here is what I suggest. The Rhode Island Boat Launch should be limited to boat launching and closed social gatherings and swimming. This is how it was for decades until two years ago. Those federal funds built the boat launch, not a beach. The lack of facilities to allow for swimmers and beachgoers was intentional and needs to be enforced. Rhode Island should impose a numerical limit on summer weekend days on the number of boats that can use the RI Boat Launch through an online permit system. Perhaps 20 boats total per day granted four-hour use permits. This is a very common boating safety practice used by many marinas and boat launches. The online system requires each permit application to read the rules and electronically agree to them. And the person who signs up must provide the registration information and the watercraft they intend to use. This helps with enforcement. Anyone who shows up without having registered in advance is denied access to the launch. The permit system requires onsite enforcement by Rhode Island, say 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on all weekend days from Memorial or Labor Day. Rhode Island built it, and they have an obligation to make sure it is used safely. The officials onsite need to issue fines to violators. The RI Boat Launch should have a very large readable sign saying registered watercraft permit holders, only the speed limit for the lake and the six mile per hour restriction for operating with 100 feet of the shore. And at the west end, I think these steps would help address many of our current problems. Thank you for your consideration. All right. I have two left.
Home stretch, Tracy, home stretch. You're doing good.
Thanks. All right, this is from Elaine and George Grandolfi, 197 Bennett Road to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Volantown, Volantown, Connecticut. Subject, Beach Pond Drawdown. We are strongly in favor of annual water drawdowns for Beach Pond. Presence of weeds in front of our property is overwhelming and excessive during years when water drawdowns do not occur. Further, there needs to be occasional water drawdowns that are greater than only two feet as property owners need to service, restore, and repair their retaining laws.
Go.
All right, last one. This is Elaine and George Grandolfi, 197 Bennett Road to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Volantown, a subject horsepower ordinance for Beach Pond. We are adamantly opposed to a horsepower limit on Beach Pond. As residents of Beach Pond, we enjoy the recreational benefit of tubing, water skiing, etc. Limiting horsepower on the lake is not the answer to the unlawful behavior of jet skiers and the mass chaos and safety issues they create. Is the end of public comments. All of these will be public records, so they're available for anyone to read. And the parts that I didn't read from the long chain of emails are also available as well. And for Skip and Ron, they'll be in the office so that you can read them as well. The long chains that I didn't read out loud. And I don't know where.
So after, I was correspondence announcement, next was board and committee reports.
No, I'm just trying to figure out if all I see on my screen is like white and blue Zoom.
Did you click on the bottom when you see the little Zoom video camera on your toolbar?
I don't have a toolbar. That's the thing. It vanished.
Can you see start meeting again, or?
No, I don't see anything. It's just white with Zoom.
So on the white with Zoom, is there an orange return to meeting?
Nope.
There's nothing on your toolbar?
No, I don't have a toolbar. Like, everything is gone except for like.
Move your mouse.
Yeah, it's not there. So I'll just be here and not seeing you guys, so.
Well, we can see you and we can hear you, so we can.
I can't see you at all, but better off.
Right, so is Pam there?
No, Pam didn't make it back.
Okay, so we don't have Pam, so.
Are you going to answer any questions or anything, or?
I'm gonna, when we get to the parts on the agenda, because I don't really remember, I put some of the questions.
So under new business, we have Beach Pond horsepower ordinance and Beach Pond drawdown.
Yeah, so when we get to that, I will get to most of the questions. Okay, if I didn't get to any of the questions, then the items weren't on the agenda. And if they want to send them, I think I might, I can probably cover most of the questions when I get to them on the agenda. Correspondence and announcements. All right, the first from the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station. The state reports its first positive mosquitoes for the triple E virus in North, in Stonington, sorry, not North Stonington, Stonington. Continued infection of the West Nile virus and mosquitoes from seven Connecticut towns. So it's just a notice that the West Nile virus, the triple E virus has been detected in Stonington. With this email also came the state of Connecticut's triple E response plan. I will put this on the website, on the town website, probably under probably under Board of Selectmen, it'll be there for anyone that wants to read it. And they'll be, Julie will have a copy in our office as well for Ron and Skip today, I just came today. I have a copy of the virtual activation of the Town of Volantown Emergency Operations Center. This was in response to tropical storm Isaiah, Isaiahosis, I'm trying to say it right. That we opened the emergency operations center to work with clearing the roads and communication with ever source to bring our power back on. I have these are old, they already did those before. A request for municipal drought contacts from NCOG, the state of Connecticut, because we're in a prolonged drought and hot conditions over this past couple of weeks. The state officials of the inter-agency drought work group have been meeting regularly and monitoring the situation closely. They asked that the town assign someone as our drought coordinator. So because this coordinator is going to be keeping track of if we're in a a situation where we don't have water, especially in areas where the fire department will draw, draws water for the community. So we appoint, I appointed Patricia Adams from the fire department for that position. And she will get any notice, notification she gets about the drought will be passed on accordingly to myself and anyone else that it would affect from the town. And that is correspondence and announcements. So we have old business, the Methodist Meeting House. So we have the Methodist Meeting House on the agenda because as we've talked in the past, we have, we were working with the Connecticut Trust for an RFP.
Pam was supposed to be next, we're just going to move it to the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, if she's not here, well, we moved her up. If she's not here, then we'll just move her to the next meeting.
Okay.
I can't see if she's here or not.
She's not here.
Okay. So we have the Methodist Meeting House again. We had talked in the past about having an RFP as to to find proposals on what to use it for. We were considering if people, if for a plan for someone to purchase and redo it on property, purchase the building and relocate it somewhere else or, or relocate the building on town property for town use. That has been put on in non-motion for a while. We have been unable to get an easement that we need to move forward with that plan. So it's, it's been in limbo. We do have to look at the six, consider the safety of this building and what we can do with it. So we were, I was thinking maybe if what you guys thought of it and one of our options would be to auction, put it up to auction.
Well, we need to do something with it, otherwise we're just going to have to keep pumping money into it every couple of years to shore it up and keep it safe because then it becomes a liability concern to the town otherwise. So we've got to do something and if, so you said the easement is stalled. Is that because our lawyers and the property owner's lawyers could not reach an agreement on the easement or?
I was told that they, the property wanted, property owner wants the, wants the town to pay for their attorney. And I said, no, I don't, the town shouldn't be paying for people's attorneys. If you guys think otherwise. But that's what I said.
No, it's, that's the wrong way to go about it and it would set a bad precedent.
Right.
I agree.
So the other option we have is to auction, auction the property with the building on it. And we could also auction off other properties in town too that we have around. That could be discussed at a different meeting, but that was an option for the meeting house. We can think about it and bring it up again at the next meeting since this is our first time talking about it. We can put it on the next meeting and if, and take public comments on it, I guess as well too. But that would be my suggestion.
I, I think we may, there was a lot of public sentiment around the Methodist Meeting House. What was it, two years ago, three years ago, we had a town meeting on it. It was that in the library and the library was fairly cut and dried, the town sentiment, but on the meeting house, it was fairly evenly split. I, I think we may need to, it's kind of hard with the pandemic, but we may need to open up for comments and have another meeting on it.
Okay.
I like the idea of auctioning it, let me just, let me just state that, I like that idea, Tracy. But I think we do need to get public comments on it before we move forward with auctioning.
Ron?
I wanted to go. That's all I'm going to say.
All right, so we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and take public comments before we decide?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll do that. Anything else on this or move on to the next, next item?
Bennett Road, Bennett Circle, Bennett Extension Committee.
Okay, Bennett Road, Bennett Circle, Bennett Extension Committee is on the agenda again. Since the, since the storm popped up, I still, I haven't had time to work on that again. I'm trying to put together the wording for the committee and what their responsibilities with, will be. We talked about it at the last meeting, I just haven't had a chance to put it all up in writing. But I will put it out there that we are going to be looking for people to be on this committee. It would, we would like people with a, to have an interest in in Bennett Road, Bennett Circle. This committee would be to oversee the project of looking into the feasibility of putting in a community well. I've already started talking to Connecticut Water and if we did this, it would be added to the, the well that's put in for tanglewood. They would have to, the one that's in there, that's put in for the tanglewood area is not set up enough to handle the amount of people that we would have to add to it. So it would include making that, making that well capable of doing so. So the project would look into the feasibility of that, would look into the drainage repairs and the repaving of Bennett Road, Bennett Circle and that project. So if anyone's interested in being on that, they can send a letter to my email or to Julie, and to Julie's email and like requesting that they be put on it, that would be good. So I think we were going to do five to seven people on that. I think there can be more people though, because there would be probably subcommittees too. So if anyone interested, just let us know. Did you guys have any more comments on that? No?
No.
Okay. So our new business, the beach pond horsepower ordinance. So as you could hear from the letters in the public comments, there is a lot going on with beach pond right now. Senator Summers and I had a meeting probably a couple of weeks ago, maybe even a month ago by now, with DEP and NCON about the lack of enforcement on beach pond. We were trying to, we brought it to their attention that I brought it to their attention that why they were suggesting things like the horsepower ordinance. When I said, what do I have control over this as the town, as a town? What do, what can, what can I control to help with what's going on on the pond? Because I don't have the power to enforce, the town does not have the power to enforce. The enforcement of this pond has to be done by DE, by DEP, by the environmental officers, which are NCON or DEM. I was told that what I could do to enforce, to help in their, in the state's eyes and also with Rhode Island would be to put up a horsepower ordinance that was, that the state of Connecticut would give all, they've done a horsepower ordinance on other towns. So they already had one in place that would help them to be able to enforce the pond. The state of, the state of Rhode Island said that my question was, why would I want to pass an ordinance that would only be enforced in Connecticut? The state of Rhode Island said that if we did decide to do an ordinance, they would put it through on the Rhode Island side also. So as long as the public comments clearly stated, a horsepower ordinance is not popular. And honestly, I knew it would not be popular. It is not something that I, I also want to pursue, I don't. But I wanted to show the state of Connecticut that it was an option that we had. And if, if people aren't going to go for that, then we're, I'm not going to go for that. Like I said to them over and over, why would I want to pass another ordinance or another anything that they aren't going to enforce? Because again, like someone mentioned, we don't have a capability of enforcing it. So I do not intend to pursue this ordinance. We don't have one written, we don't have one drafted. I have not even pursued it with the state of Connecticut as to what that horsepower restriction would be. But I wanted to bring it to the table to also show that we had discussed it. So, and to have on file the public comments to show that it's in opposition and that it's not something that's going to happen.
Tracy, your Herculean effort reading through the public comments you received via email since we couldn't have a town meeting. Good job on that. And as you stated, at 50 plus comments, and I believe by my count, there were only two in support of a horsepower ordinance. Everyone was overwhelmingly against. So I'm, I'm in agreement with you that this is not something we move forward with. We have this on the record that we discussed it and that we got feedback from townsfolk and townsfolk said, no.
Exactly how I feel.
Okay, so we're going to put the horsepower ordinance to bed.
Yep.
We, we brought it up, we brought it to the residents and it's not something that anyone believes is, is a solution, so. All right, moving on. Beach pond drawdown. All right, so it's the time of year to put in the request for the beach pond drawdown on our website and I printed out a copy and it's probably lost in my huge pile of stuff. I don't know what I did with it. Okay, so what I put up on the, it's, excuse me, it's been on the website under the beach pond information. I think since last year, maybe before that. If people go there, they will see a link for the drawdown policy for beach pond. This document was from September of 1998, as far as I know. And from what I've gotten back from DEP, it has not been updated since then. And also what I, what's on that link is a letter from 2008 from the commissioner of DEP at the time, Gina McCarthy, to the first selectman at the time, Gil Graham. And the letter talks about the establishing of a drawdown schedule for beach pond where it states that there is be a two foot drawdown every third year if requested by the town. And it said that this, it repeatedly says this is a proposed schedule. So I did contact DEP to find out if this proposed schedule from 2008 actually made it to a like actual schedule because it keeps calling it a proposed schedule and I have not had an answer on that either, so.
I'm pretty sure they agreed to every three years, but they wanted us to call them every third year to request it. That's the only thing. And like I say, their biggest problem with drawing down beach pond was they were afraid that people would try to reclaim some of the land. And like in 2004, one of the emails said it was the last time there was a big drawdown. If we really have to push it, which I don't mind pushing it, I know somebody who had to patrol, watched the pond then that would be willing to do it at no cost to the town.
Right, and last year, when I put in the request, I did state clearly that if for a drawdown, we would monitor and I did, and I did have people are in our wetlands officer and had said that would be fine to do last year, so.
One other thing that we can add to that, besides just visual enforcement, since 2004, we're talking 16 years later, there's a significant improvement in satellite technology and satellite imagery that's available to the general public, not even specialized government stuff. So it would be very easy to
Yep.
find people who have taken advantage of this and then the state can go after them.
Right.
So that's another thing that will, you know, Ron, you brought up that argument and as we've been sitting here, that's been churning in my head and that's definitely, it's very easy to show if someone has, you know, moved a foot, two foot, five foot, 10 foot, moved that retain wall outward with satellite imagery. So we can propose that to the state as well, that you can go after anyone who, you know, tries to abuse this.
Right, so I do agree with a lot of the residents that the two foot or three, two or three foot drawdown that we had last year was totally inadequate for them to do any repairs. Last year, the pond was. the pond was at a higher level to begin with, because last year was a, a wet year. So a two to three foot drawdown really didn't do much for the already high water table. And not to mention what people did say about the different sides of the pond having different depths. So I know we did have the drawdown last year. Even with the, the state's proposed schedule, I'm waiting to see if they actually have a not proposed schedule. I would like to put in the drawdown again this year. And I I'm leaning towards the ten foot myself, just because I know that the, the likeliness of them actually doing ten feet is low, but maybe they will compromise and do a, a low, a lower amount that will help us or help the residents. So I will put the letter in for, for ten feet. Unless you guys have a different idea?
No, it has to be put in. And the thing is, we have to back it. And you, like you said, wells were the other things that the state fought, that wells go dry and people would have to, I mean, the last time there was a big one, I remember somebody calling me from Ten Rod Road to complain that their well went dry because Beach Pond was four feet or five feet, whatever it went down. Now that's totally impossible. So you're gonna get, you know, it depends on, and the second thing you have to remember too is that the weather, you can draw it down ten feet. If it rains like heck all winter, you can't accomplish anything. So it's just something that, you know, we might have to put it off. Go for it this year. But if something happens, it doesn't, we're gonna have to push it again next year with the same stipulations.
Right.
This is definitely something we just need to keep hammering at the state saying, we need a ten foot drawdown.
Yeah. And I also would like to request a revisiting on their drawdown policy too. It hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-eight. And it's probably time to, to bring that up at the table too, to update it. So I will put that in the letter as well.
I think that we made an upgrade after that. That year that we drew it down quite a bit, they agreed that they would have a drawdown every third year. But again, we were supposed to let them know every third year. I guess they can't count as high as three to keep track of time. Well, it's, we have got no cooperation from them either.
Right.
So it
Yeah, I agree. And I, and and someone had mentioned in one of their emails about the cost of the draw, I thought someone touched on the cost of the drawdown, which the town does pay for the, for the drawdown. I think we have to pay, I don't know if it's five foot or whatever, but the town can cover the cost. Not a problem depending on the different size of it.
Well, it was so much an hour to watch the things. And to me, it's ridiculous that the state who does nothing to control the, the pond itself, charges us. I'll tell you that. I think that was something, like you said, they don't pay us the pilot money they should. They don't give us the help they should. And here they want us to pay for something. If we were on the other side of the state, I'm sure it would be taken care of well.
Right, right. So if you guys agree, I will put the request in for for ten feet to repair walls. I'm, I intend to submit all of the public comments today. Copies of them, along with the drawdown, that have to do with the drawdown request, so those would go with it. I don't know if you have any other comments or ideas about it?
I would say to have everybody get a hold of whoever is in charge of the drawdowns, but it's not gonna do any good. They wouldn't read the emails or to correspond. So like I say, again,
It's the commissioner will get it. It goes right to the, the letter goes right to the commissioner of DEP, which is will get the, the request and she'll get all the letters, all the emails with it as well. So
Quick question, is it public information, what the state drawdowns are on all bodies of water across the state?
Probably, I can get that and find out.
Because that's something that we could probably use for a little bit of leverage there, you know? Eastern side of the state being neglected and forgotten if we see large drawdowns happening on bodies of water on the western side of the state.
Okay, I can look into that.
Yes, that's a very good idea, Skip.
Yep. Yeah, that's good. I'll look into that as well. All right, if that's the end of the drawdown, I wanted to go back to the horsepower ordinance, because I remembered something that I wanted to add to that too, as far as the enforcement on the pond, if you guys are all right with that.
Yes.
Okay. So another thing that was touched in, I think more than one of the emails probably was about the Coast Guard. We, we did bring it up, Senator Summers and I did bring it up to to DEP and NCON about how in the past, the Coast Guard used to be there. Senator Summers did reach out to the Coast Guard and DEP said they were going to as well. So we're waiting to hear back on how that would go. The Coast Guard would have the power to enforce on both sides of the pond. Like I mentioned earlier, it's frustrating. I, I have the same frustration as the residents about the enforcement. Where, where, where the town, we represent the town against two states. And to try and even with Senator Summers and with Representative Lanier, to try and get on the the towns, I mean, the, the two separate states to, to enforce has been the biggest challenge on our end too. I did meet with DEM, the director of DEM, and the person that does their enforcement for DEM. And they straight up told me that their governor is sending all of the people, all of the DEM officers to the oceans this year, because that's where they're having problems and that they weren't gonna be enforcing on the pond. Which was not what, what I wanted to hear and not what anyone wants to hear. I did request to them that since they weren't gonna be there, the problem is from their boat launch. And the Connecticut enforcement that's on the pond has to deal with people running to the Rhode Island side and not being able to enforce that, that we come up with a mutual enforcement between the two states. So that the Rhode Island gives the power to Connecticut to enforce and that, and that it's reciprocal on both sides so that we can enforce everything. They, I was told by the commissioner of DEM that they will check with their attorneys to see how, how and if that's possible. I have not heard back yet and I am gonna be touching base by the end of this week to find out what has happened with that. And the same with Connecticut. So that's where the enforcement is. Like I said, the enforcement has been brought up multiple times to all agencies involved. That it's like crying wolf if, if they're not actually giving tickets and enforcing what's already in existence. So where things are there. Did you guys have any questions or anything about that?
I don't.
Okay. All right, on the agenda, next on the agenda is the Red Cross Fund. Julie, I hope has the, I forgot to print this stuff for this. This is in regards to the passport books that we have for the town. Their old, old accounts that were created for different purposes. The Red Cross, I think the Red Cross Fund might have been set up back in the time when, when the towns were responsible for social services. Now all the social services are set up through the state. They used to be set up through the town. So we do have an old account for the Red Cross Fund and Julie can tell us exactly how much is in there.
It's about sixteen hundred dollars. I don't have the exact number with me written down. Yeah, I left it in the office.
Yeah, wait, this is what happens when we work from home and the office. So what we would, what, what would be proposed to do is to move the, our accountant and our auditor has suggested that we, we close or minimize all of these older passbook accounts. So the Red Cross one, which has, like Julie said, over a thousand, six hundred dollars. We would like to Yeah. We'd like to close out this account and put, give, I don't wanna say give, move, move the money to the community fund, the Volantown Community Fund that is set up with the fire department and nonprofits in town. The money is used for residents in need. In the past, we've used it for like gas cards if, if people are in the hospital or food, food cards or something. So just to move the money there for, for the use of people in need. And the, and the decision on how the, how the money is spent is a group decision with input from the fire, fire chief, myself and religious the religious leaders in town and so that's a suggestion.
I'm all for it. And you said that, what you called the auditor said before that we should close them out anyways.
Yes.
So I mean, it's, that's a good place to put it. It'll get used for roughly the same purpose. And it clears it up on the books.
Yeah.
It's just sitting there, not doing anything, not making any interest and
It was costing two dollars a month, I think Richie said that if it was not active or something like that. So he had lost fourteen dollars and he had a fit about that.
Right.
Which I don't blame him.
So do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion that we close out the Red Cross Fund account and move it as described by Tracy.
I second that.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to close out the Red Cross Fund and move it to the Volantown Community Fund through the fire department and town nonprofits. So all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, we will do that.
And just a quick search on this, it looks like it was either seventy-five or seventy-nine that this responsibility was assumed by the state.
Right, right. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Forge Hill Bridge. All right. I put the report up on the website. I emailed it to you, Skip. I've looked through it and I've had a phone call from the DOT about it. In short, that bridge was built in nineteen twenty. It has had some minor patches, patchwork, painting done to it. But it has not had any repairs to it. So it's a hundred years now. This inspection, it is downgraded to a poor, which is not immediate closure, but it is preparing to close if we don't do anything to it. So the next inspection would be in twenty twenty-two. The, from the conversation I had, it, it sounded like it wasn't guaranteed that it would be open until twenty twenty-two if we didn't do something immediately to to start repairing it. So we've looked into this in the past and it, it was determined that this is a very expensive bridge, which is why I don't, it hasn't been fixed or replaced or repaired. They estimate about a million dollars to fix it, to make it up to where it should be. So this was something that we had been planning on fixing. We, we have money set aside in capital projects for it. I think there's fifteen or twenty thousand we put aside.
Yeah.
That's not really gonna do much for, for it. We did, I know we've mentioned the steep grant that came out. Application deadline's been extended until the end of August. There were a bunch of projects that we talked about using it for. The steep grant is, I don't wanna say only, like it's not a lot of money because it is, but for steep grants that are usually five hundred thousand dollars, this steep grant's only a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-eight or a hundred and thirty thousand. It's, it's not, it's not anything, all of the projects that we, that we need to do are very expensive projects. So I think that we should seriously consider using that for the first phase of the bridge. To show that we need to take action on it. And for the first phase, we would need like a project manager, we would need it to be while we have the inspection, but we need like design, we need to figure out how, how we're gonna engineering and design. So my proposal would be to use to apply for the grant for the engineering and design phase of the, the project manager to cover our start for the bridge repair.
Is, can we use NCOG Engineering Services for any part of this?
Isn't worth trouble.
What was that, Ron?
Is not worth the trouble to get them involved with anything. We are very disappointed with that. They do. They have not helped us at all.
Okay. I, I am for using the steep grant. One question that I wanna ask for the rec, for getting on the record is if we did nothing and this bridge collapsed and we had to replace this bridge, what would the cost be to replace the bridge?
That's what's, that's what would be like over, when we looked in it, at it a couple of years ago, it was estimated a million, at least a million dollars to replace the bridge. So and we're probably gonna end up replacing the bridge, but I am gonna be talking to Russell Gray over in Sterling. They have done a lot of bridges. There are grants out there for, there's a state grants and federal grants specifically for bridges. I've been advised by several towns who have done those grants not to even bother with them. They seem to drive the price up and they can take, I'm pretty sure you could probably guess what bridges were done with these grants because they're closed for a really long time. We can't really afford to have that bridge closed for a long time. When I was talking to our Public Works guys about it, the thought of having that bridge closed during winter and them having to plow down it and not be able, like having to turn around and go back up with a plow truck was a nightmare. So we have to take action on it we have to take action on it, um, sooner than later, so.
It's gotta be done if we can talk to the guy that Pete writes the grants and, uh, make sure, you know, you say that, we follow the rules of the state and go from there.
I'm gonna, this would be for the first phase. Um, and then once we know the first phase would help us get a more solid estimate on the cost. Like I said before, uh, Russell and Sterling, they've done several bridges without having to use the grants. I will find out what companies, um, he used, I, that, um, that worked with them and just do our, do our research and go from there, so.
It's a way to do it.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Yep.
Anything else on the bridge?
Oh, just, uh, like you said, if we, if the guy in the state that told me if you could make it for cars and trucks only, you might be able to, you know, use it longer, but how do you enforce that?
Yeah, how do we enforce it when they use it for the boat launch, so?
Uh, like you say, the, even that, there really wouldn't be much weight, but it's still tough to enforce and you'd have to check with the state what can be done. And we're gonna need some signs, uh, uh, just do, find out what you can and we'll go from there.
And I also, I did get a contact from the DOT. Um, they do have a, like, a, a bridge repair person on staff that is highly knowledgeable on, on things. So, I will be contacting him as well to see, um, what he has as information too, so.
Good.
I just got, I just got all the information, uh, yesterday or today about it, so I haven't had a chance to go through it all yet. Alright, next on the agenda is the elderly commission appointments. I did get three requests to be appointed. If we would like to start appointing people, um, they can meet, if they wanna start meeting, they can meet, um, they can start meeting via Zoom. So, I have a request for appointment from Joan Boris. She, uh, lives at one five six Pendleton Hill Road and she is currently our municipal agent to the elderly and she does the Meals on Wheels. She's a great contact with the elderly and she'd like to be on the commission. Uh, the next is Nora Olton. She is interested in being on the commission and would like to be appointed. And lastly, I have Ron Tugess, twenty-four Mahogany Oak Trail. He would also like to be appointed.
I have nothing against any of them whatsoever.
It's people volunteering to, um, be a part of town government, so.
Yes, I like it.
Yes.
And we can take, we have the position for, I think, up to seven people. So, they're still, um, we can start by appointing, uh, these three. We did not have a minimum, but when I, I think I remembered looking through and we don't have a minimum. So, uh, these three can start and if, if people are interested, they can, um, hop, hop on a board, uh, send us a email, um, with your, and your request to be appointed and we, we still have the spot to request, uh, appoint four more people.
Good.
Did we have a motion for?
I'll make a motion to appoint, as, as named.
I second the motion.
Alright, so the motion's been named, uh, named, ma, made and seconded to appoint Joan Boris, Nora Olton and Ronald Tugess, um, to the elderly commission. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, uh, they've been appointed.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, the next on the agenda is the driveway permit for James Road. Uh, we have a permit for-
The number is one eighty now.
Oh, they changed the number?
Uh, yes, cuz it was wrong, it was totally wrong.
Okay, cuz it says here one thirty-six, so.
Yeah, which does not exist.
Alright, so you said one eighty?
That's what I think Beth said, yes, it's at the end of the road on the former Cliff, uh, Galafrenia property.
Alright, I'll just put in note to check the address that it's probably one eighty.
Alright. And, uh, you say that, uh, driveway is on the plans that were drawn up by, uh, John Felice and they did an excellent job and, uh, I talked to the guy and I'm fine. It was an existing driveway to begin with, but, uh, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So, you wanna make a motion to accept, uh, the application?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the application.
Good, I second it.
Alright, so the motion's been made, uh, by Skip and seconded by Ron to approve the driveway application for James Road. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the application's been approved.
Alright, we had a second, uh, request from Bob Zepinski to, uh, extend his driveway permit. He said through September and with the last time we, uh, gave somebody longer length, we gave it for a year, so I should, you on that thing, make it for a year. But, uh, I'd, I'd make a, you know, I'd like to let, to make an extension on it for him.
Okay, so that, we have a motion to, um, extend the, uh, driveway permit for up to, we can do it a year cuz that's what we, that's what we've been doing at requests for, um, the Zepinski property that's on Brown Road.
I make that motion.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Alright, so the motion's been made and seconded to, um, extend the driveway, um, permit application for a year for the Zepinski property on Brown Road, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, the, um, the application, uh, the permit is, uh, extended.
Good.
Alright, I think we made it to the last one on the agenda.
And you already discussed this a little bit.
Yes, this is for the steep program opt-in, so we have to, um, this is for the, um, for the formality, I don't know, Julie, do you have a copy of this? Because I didn't grab a copy of that either.
Yeah, um, well, basically, it just says in the statute that the, um, town needs to, um, at a board of selectmen's meeting, have a vote to opt into the grant and then send something in writing to the state that, um, the town has opted in in order to receive the grant. You want me to read the statute or?
Does it say, it doesn't, does it say that what we, do we have to pick what we're doing it for or it's?
No, this is just to opt in to receive steep grant money. That's not even for this specific, and this lasts for four years.
Okay.
I make a motion as such.
I second the motion to opt in for steep grants.
Okay, so the, the motion's been made and seconded, um, for, um, for it to let, this last for four years, um, to opt into the steep grant program. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So, there we go.
Ron, the honor's yours.
I make a motion that we close the meeting.
I second the motion.
Alright, uh, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, you cut into my sleep time.
That was like our longest meeting ever.
Yep, good night.
Alright.
Yes, bye.
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 Bye.